All right, I call the Lewiston City Council Work Session to order. The time and place is advertised. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you and welcome, everyone. I'm going to do my best to speak up. I've been accused of not talking lately, but beforehand, there are chocolate chip cookies in the back, so if you'd like to try one, please. They're brought to us by one of our part-time attendees. She brings us cakes and cookies once in a while. They're really good, so please help yourself. Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Also, your Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting the viewpoints of others, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Lewiston. So if you have citizen comments today, I would invite you to the podium up front here. We just need your name and your city of residence. We don't need your street address. And I don't see anyone, so I'm going to keep it moving. Okay, next up, we have presentations. I demand council police department badge pinning. We're promoting Corporal Josh Arson to the rank of sergeant today. And before we do that, Police Chief Jason Cusick, if I could just let council know that I don't know how well I knew Josh when he was young, but I lived in Esper's at the time and his mom, and he was smaller than he is today, but it's really great to see you doing well, Josh, and just thank you for serving our community and for your family being here today also. Chief Cusick.
Thank you, Jason Cusick, Chief of Police. Mr. Mayor, city councilors, ladies and gentlemen, to get to get act, correction, sorry. Today, we gather to celebrate a milestone for Lewiston Police Department, but also our community. It is my privilege to recognize the dedication, commitment, and leadership of our newly promoted Sergeant Josh Arson. He's exemplified perseverance in our profession since his law enforcement career began. And that career began actually with the Lewiston Police Department as a reserve in 2009. He was then hired full-time at the Lewis County Sheriff's Office in March of 2011, and he was there until January of 2026, at which point then he started full-time with the Lewiston Police Department in January of 2016. If I said 20, it's 26, I mean 2016 with Lewis.
Future, what?
I'm telling you, yeah. That's how good he is. He supervises two agencies at once. Since being hired, he became a senior patrol officer and a field training officer in 2018, became a firearms instructor also in 2018, and eventually he became the lead farm instructor for the agency in 2023. He's been a SWAT team member since 2016, and he just became a assistant team leader this year, or in 2024. He has also obtained his intermediate and advanced post certificates, and he was promoted to corporal in May of 2021. He's been an acting sergeant on several occasions, but the most recent has been since January of this year to current date. I'd like to thank Josh as he takes on more supervisor responsibilities. I would also like to thank his wife, Stephanie, and his kids, Olivia and Jackson, as they support both him and also the department. Now, in closing, I just want to make sure that we all congratulate Josh today, but also going forward on this very well-deserved promotion. I expect his leadership will continue to uphold the values, honor, and tradition of our esteemed department. Right now, I'd like to welcome City Clerk Tanya Baracky up to administer the oath of office, as well as Josh, and I believe your wife is badging you?
Yeah.
Yep. We'd like to have Stephanie come up as well, and we'll get this official.
All right. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Hi, Josh Arson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Lewiston.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Lewiston.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge all of the duties.
Faithfully discharge all of the duties.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
In the City of Lewiston.
In the City of Lewiston.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've probably done this before.
No.
Oh. Well, it's not a comment to drop blood, so it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this, I think this is probably a good opportunity too for, as mayor and the council too, to thank all of our men and women who serve us in uniform. You are greatly appreciated. You don't have an easy job, so just thank you for your service, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion items. Please note that identifying an item as the next item does not require the city council to vote on that item. Item A, Main Street Bond Proposal: Discussion and Direction on a Potential Bond Proposal for Main Street Infrastructure Improvements. And before I turn this over to our Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson, I do want to just have a lighter moment here and say, even though we dress the same and we have the same last name, we are not related to each other. I think these, I think these are the same colors.
I noticed that today.
Director Johnson, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. Dapperly dressed, as picked out by my wife, so. I guess this is a project that we've been working on for many months, over a year, I think now. And so there's a lot of details that we have covered in the past. There's a lot of details we're going to cover moving forward. I'm going to do my best to give you a high-level overview, but I think coming out of the gate right now, I want to be sure that you and the public understand that this is a work in progress. What we have to do is decide if we're going to proceed ahead with a bond, but a lot of the stuff we're going to talk about today are estimates, because we need to kind of put, form things together. There's contingencies built in, the, the bond rates that we're talking about, those are clipped out from today. They could go up, they could go down, but we have to use the information that we have in front of us today to make a decision of how we want to move forward with this project in the years to come. So I'm telling you that, right, coming out of the gate, that there's, there's a lot of answers that we can get today, but there's also a lot of questions as we work forward into the design and bonding and funding. And so with me in Zoom land today, we have our bond counsel, Clearwater Financial, that's Christie Stoll, and we have, from Welch Comer, the design engineer who, who, you know, put together this concept design, Melissa Cleveland. So they're, they're both here. I will do most of the talking on the upfront, but I know there's probably a lot of questions, particularly about the financial side, that I will lean on them, then trying to give you answers, because I have a degree in engineering, I do not have a degree in finance.
Director Johnson.
Yes.
Would you please make sure they can hear you and we can hear them?
Can you guys hear us in Zoom land?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear me?
Are you good?
Are you able to hear me as well?
Yep. All right. We're clear. Now, we're going to forward the slides. Okay. So I'm going to, first couple of minutes, I'm just going to take and give you a little background on the project and why we are here. So again, I guess the straight-up question is, why are we even talking about a bond? And if you recall, a few of you have been to some of the open houses, so some of the subject matter is probably a bit or very repetitive to you, but I want to make sure we're all on the same playing field as we're moving along. And I think in a nutshell, why we're talking about a bond is to late lockdown today's construction prices. And so you'll see, we're not talking about a small amount of money. You know, this is a lot of money. This is a major, I think at one point, we talked about it being a generational investment in our community. So as we work forward, and Lewiston in the scale of Idaho is a moderately sized town, but we're not a huge town in the United States or the world, and so we start talking about 20, 30, 40, $50 million projects, our tax base can't, can't just go out and do a $50 million job. And if we were going to pay for it over time, you know, let's just pick $30 million. And if you can only save $2 million a year, you're talking about 15 years just to build enough funds to go out and do that. What is, what is inflation doing in 15 years? And so you're constantly, those, those goalposts are continuing to move away from you. And so the benefit of a bond is you lock down in today's construction prices and build it for today, so you're not having to catch up with construction inflation over time. This also gives us an opportunity to combine our resources. The uniqueness of Main Street is that it is one of our few major projects where it is impactful on the entire city sewer, water, stormwater, and transportation. And so that gives us an opportunity to, you know, combine multiple projects, combine multiple funding sources, where you're not overly drawing into one or the other. You know, a case in point would be a water treatment plant that we just built. All of the funds that go to build that are all coming out of our water funds. And so this Main Street allows us to diversify where all those payments are coming from. And of course, a single project, which allows us to do that with a bond, reduces the impact on the downtown, which is something that, that downtown businesses and property owners have told us time and time again, saying, if you're going to do a project to reconstruct Main Street and the infrastructure underneath it, please do it in a manner that reduces the impact on our businesses. So we'll revisit this slide. This is, I'll tell you what I'm going to ask you, I'll tell you what, what the information is, and then I'm going to ask you at the end. So three questions for today. Are we still interested as a city to move forward with a public vote for a bond for the infrastructure improvements on Main Street and downtown? And if so, for what amount? And then third, what are the terms? 20, 30-year bond? What, what is your pleasure on that? This is all to go out to the voters, by the way. We're not making a decision today. Okay. High-level overview. So what, what we have talked about in the past is what, what is this area that we're talking about? So it's more or less contained within First and Ninth Street, probably F Street, or at least the cliffs of Norbal Hill, out to the train tracks, and kind of hemmed in by Twin City Foods out on the, along the river there. As we have discovered and through many of these meetings, it, it trickles a little bit out. There's some pavement, there's some tie-ins for utilities, there's some stormwater, but generally, the area that we're talking about is contained within that, what we would call Main Street, First to Ninth with some D Street. What are we trying to fix? So I think, as we've talked about in previous meetings, water is the driver. Water is the oldest utility within Main, or downtown. It is, the lines that are currently servicing at least this building and many other buildings in downtown are from 1910. That's pre-World War I. The sizing, or they're undersized generally, many of the lines are. Some of them, as we've worked, talking about ARPA dollars previously, have gotten to Ninth Street, but now into that downtown concentrated core. It's a far more complex, complex project. And in the past, I've talked about the, the true telling signs of the health of a water system is how many water main you leak, water main leaks you have. We have a lot of water main leaks downtown, proportionate to the amount of water main that's down here. So that, all the indications are that these lines are undersized and in a condition that needs to be replaced. Wastewater, it's the good news, bad news? It's usually typically in 1930s. So the good news is there are significant segments within the Main Street that, or the downtown, that don't need to be replaced. So that's the good news. It's not as, as extensive as, as the water. The bad news is it's 20 feet deep. So the segments that do need to be replaced, that are undersized, are significantly deep, and the construction method with shoring and peeling trenches back basically consume up a lot of the, the street itself. Stormwater is a, it, it, I, what I call a mishmash system that before, everything just flowed out to the river. Now the river's higher than Main Street or downtown, and so the system getting to the ponds where the water is ultimately discharged and treated is robust, because it was new and, and built in the 70s when the, when the levees went in. The stuff that's further away from the levees was a system that was like anything else in the American West in the, in the age of just get it out of here. And so the system isn't necessarily connected. Main Street is flat. It does, I mean, there is a couple inches of fall from First Street to Ninth Street. So you, as you see, in the spring now, you'll see bird baths, you'll see ponding, because we just can't get the water to drain out of Main Street or downtown. And the system is also undersized and, you know, roof drains and other areas that drain into it. And then the odds and ends that go with this project, with the three utilities, our fiber internet being driven by our port, sidewalk vaults that are underneath the sidewalks in front of many of the businesses downtown, and then the street system, whatever we wanted to build on top of that, once we're done with all the underground utilities. And I've already touched on this a little bit. I think you may have already seen this slide. Why one big project? And like I said, the driver, the catalyst is water. Trying to get the water system replaced for investment and redevelopment in Main Streets, but while we're there, identifying stormwater, wastewater, and transportation. Combining these projects into one allows us to diversify the, the funding and get this in front of the voters to ask them, is this something that the community values investing in? And one big project allows us to go in shared trenches, shared mobilization. Instead of doing four or five separate projects, you bundle it all into one, one interference with the Main Street businesses and get it done and over with, and then you pay it back over time. Finally, just a quick overview, also recycled from one of our many presentations, going back pre-2024, I think the joke was Lewiston, particularly downtown, was really good at planning, not really good at building. And so the studies, traffic circulations, pedestrian studies, multiple circulate, all kinds of studies downtown, as far as how the business owners and, and users wanted to invest in the infrastructure. And so taking all of those efforts, moving forward in 2024, and a concept design for the infrastructure, and that's where we're closing out the books on 2024, moving into 2025, and bundling that all into a general obligation bond election or a GO bond election. These are dates out in the future to kind of show you, this is, we're what, a third of the way through this process. We have many, many things to move forward. If the GO bond goes before the voters and if it was successful, we're still another year or more in design permitting to get everything put in order for a construction, maybe in '26, '27, and then forward from there. All right. So everybody wants to know, that's great, those are all pretty pictures, but what is the bottom line? Where's, what does this cost? And so I think earlier, a couple of months ago, you saw the number 37 and change, sharpen the pencils, the project now is at $33.3 million. And so we've broken it down, and as I've already said, these are concept level costs. So these are built in, there's contingencies, I think 15% contingencies, because inevitably, everything you get working on a project and you think it's X, and it turns out to be Y, and there's always projects that overrun, and so you want to make sure you're as conservative as you can in the front end, so you can take on these challenges once you get into full design or construction. And so the breakdown, this is where we're going to take a fork in the road. So if you remember, there was a conversation about festival streets and gingerbread, and so there was a lot of question and answer of what was the value to the community? Should this be a part of the project? Where do we go with that? And so what Welch Comer did was to say, well, let's break that out. Let's, let's make this as bare bones as we can, generally. And so the project cost doesn't change, we just broke that cost. Those are local improvements, and I'll get into what those specifically are. And so now we're looking at full construction, which is everything that you saw with the bells and whistles, and then the reduced construction, which takes those out and puts back more or less what you've got here now. It, it will be obviously new concrete, new pavement, it will look nicer, I mean, a lot of the trees has got to go, things like that will, will change, but it's generally putting it back. We're not, we're not going to over-invest in pavers or pedestrian lighting and things like that. So you can see the breakdown, 4.1 for water, 2.9 for wastewater, 23.7 for streets. And so it, it is a little, it's a little hard to break this down in such a way where you can say, that's exactly to the penny of what wastewater will pay. Because I already said, once you kick that, you dive down 20 feet and you tear out that street, it's only fair wastewater pays for the portion of the street that you tore out. But you also have water, you have waste, you know, stormwater, streets. Wastewater's not paying for signal replacements, because those signals needed to be replaced. And so it's, what you need to present here on the cost breakdown needs to be defensible. That's really all it is. And so when we get it out, and these numbers, I guarantee you, will change. I, I can tell you, once we start going into a full design, this is, you know, the, the changes within what we're finding and what we're seeing, and, oh, we didn't consider this component, these, these numbers are going to be in flux. What's important is the total value at the bottom, that 33.3. That's basically what we think it's going to cost. What's broken out, within your packet, it was labeled as an LID, which is a local improvement district. That is something you can do. And so if, for whatever reason, the council said, we're not going to bond that, we, the, the downtown property owners can come up with the funds, and if they wanted additional pavers, pedestrian lighting, festival streets, furniture, whatever they wanted, they could form an LID and then pay for those themselves, or they could go get a, go find a grant or private funds, whatever they wanted to do. If the council so chose, they weren't going to pay that, pay for that. And we basically tried to pull out all of those aesthetic components. The one thing that was in that LID, within that 2.6, is the sidewalk vaults. We, it, you, you, my recommendation is you do the sidewalk vaults with the project. Who pays for that? Is there a cost share with the property owner? Because once you, the convincing factor for me was, when we filled the sidewalk vault earlier, I think it was last summer, it was, it was somewhat tedious and arduous to get, you know, in this little hole on, on the sidewalk, you had to put everything back to match what's existing. We'll have the whole Main Street torn up. You won't have traffic control. You will literally just pull everything out, fill it, put it back, and move on. It wouldn't even have to be concrete. You could fill it with, with a much easier fill, because you're not having to flow it through a tiny port, and, and you're not coming back to fixies down the road. If you're going to tear up Main Street and you're going to fix all the utilities, you need to do the sidewalk vaults at the same time, unless the property owner, you know, adamantly swore they needed to keep it closed off, but that's a whole different issue. I don't want this to be derailed by the sidewalk vaults. I'm just telling you that, you know, it's important to address those with this project. We can talk about where the funds come at a later date. All right. So as I already said, a lot of money. These are the balances as of last week for our current capital funds. So all those dollars in front of you, wastewater, water, stormwater, transportation, those are all within their own pot. Wastewater, water, stormwater, those are enterprise funds, so user fees go into that. Those funds are dedicated for capital. So every year, we come to you with a budget, and typically, we include, I don't know, anything from pipeline replacement, lift stations, treatment facilities, reservoirs, whatever it is. And yes, $7.4 million in wastewater is a lot of money. Wastewater plant costs $30 million. A lift station costs anywhere from $2 to $4 million, depending on the size of it. So if we're looking at this in how we invest our capital, these dollars, we obviously can't pay for everything right out the gate. That's why we're here for a bond. And we can't take from these funds, we can't rob wastewater $7 million and not have money to invest in pipeline replacement or all the other systems within the, in the network. And so what's important is to try and find a balance. We want to pay down, you know, we don't, we don't want to have a bond greater, if we have money in our pocket that's available to spend on these facilities, we want to spend that money and not take the debt service, but we don't want to over-obligate any of these utilities or the transportation network to such a degree that we're not able to address any other deficiencies within our system. I think you've heard me talk over the years, there's plenty of deficiencies, that's, that's what we're trying to do, is to address these deficiencies. And so these are placeholders. We went through wastewater 7.4, based off of how we spend our money down, invest in capital, $2 million seems like a good starting point for putting down on this project. Water's a million out of the 6.9, and I've said again, water is one of our more delicate utilities, because, case in point, you've heard me talk last month about the intake. That's a $16 million job. We're, we're at seven, barely, not even seven. So being very delicate with these funds, because I can't take wastewater funds and put it into the water fund to lift them up in a, in a hard time right now. These are all independent of each other, and so that's why we're very careful with how we obligate these funds for these projects. And so again, don't get too hung up on, on what these dollars are up here. At the bottom line, comfortably, conservatively, I would say we have roughly $6 million to spend down on that $33 million project that we're talking about today. So there's that fork in the road. We have full construction, and the, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because it's hard to see all the numbers, but everything I just talked about, here's your fund balances, and this was in your packet, here's your fund balances, this is what we're paying down for the one time, and this is what's remaining on the project cost. And so this is the full construction. Once you have the $33 million and you spend down your $6 million, your full construction is 27. And, you know, here's the reduced one, same deal, 33, you take out that 2.6, and now you're just under $25 million. So this is an easier-to-read table for you. So I broke it out into four different scenarios. The full, which is a 20 or 30-year bond, the reduced, which is, does not have that LID component, 20 or 30- that LID component, twenty or thirty years, and so, you can see the prices, the full is, the price stays the same, the reduced is twenty-four point five, and then you can see, these are based off of a, a rate which was provided to us by Clearwater Financial. Again, that rate is going to fluctuate between today and whenever we lock that rate down, but this is for, you know, purposes of just demonstrating it's today. The full twenty-year, full twenty-year bond is one point nine nine a year, the full thirty year, which is obviously, it's like a thirty-year mortgage, is one point five five. You take that out, you take the LID component out, now, the reduced, for the twenty-five year bond, or twenty-five million dollar bond is one point eight for twenty years, or you extend that out to the full thirty, it's one point four. One thing I did want to address, which is in your packet, is it's, if you saw the draft ordinance and the language in it, it talks about the estimated annual cost to the taxpayer on the proposed bond levy is a tax of, this was one that was, I used as an example, a hundred and eleven dollars, forty-four cents per one hundred thousand of taxable assessed value per year based on current conditions. And so, I want to make sure you and everybody else out there listening today don't feel like this is a bait and switch, because it's very important, when we put this together, that we were planning, designing, and going to construct a project that fits within our budget. But what's required for the bond language, the GO bond language, is that we have to tell you what that impact is to your taxable value. That taxable, you're paying those dollars anyway, so we're just taking that portion and putting it into this project. And so, again, you know, our commitment was, this project was not going to impact your property taxes, this, but that's how we have to write it in a GO bond, and so, you can see the dollar amounts that go along with the twenty-thirty, full and reduced. So, covered a lot of details, I know we'll go back, but just generally, the immediate timeline, today is the work session, so here we are, going over what we just talked about. Next week is the Main Street Bond Ordinance, we'll be bringing back, so looking to get the feedback from you, so we can draft the ordinance, get it in the packet, and get it in front of you for adoption next week, if that's your pleasure. March fourteenth is the date it needs to be turned into Nesper's County to get put on the ballot, and then May twentieth would be the bond election. So, that brings us back to the original three questions. Shall we proceed? If so, for how much and what terms?
Thank you, Director. Councilors, we're just going to have to have kind of an open session here, so please just interact with the Director, and don't worry about going through the chair, maybe that'll facilitate a more open, better discussion. So, Councilor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you. So, Director, can you explain to me, we just did a whole bunch of water sewer lines in the eastern part of Main Street, and it didn't cost us a whole bunch of money, property tax dollars, so why all of a sudden does this cost us twenty-six million?
That stuff was paid by ARPA, so it was all federally, those came through the federal funds, and then if you look at the patchback on that, well, one, that was one product, one, the funding did not come from the enterprise funds, so that was all ARPA dollars, so that was not, I mean, it was revenue in, project out, so there was zero impact on our operation or capital funds. Second part is, I would point out the pavement. If you're driving FEs, that block between FEs and say, the liquor store there, those cuts, those are all just cut the trench out, pull the water line out, replace it, and patch it back. There was no sidewalk, there was no pavement, there was, it was just patch back and leave it the way it is, and you can see what it looks like when you don't replace the entire street with that. And then, part, I guess the one thing I did want to say, talk about ARPA dollars, you know, that the ARPA dollars need to be spent by the end of '26, and so, they are obligated currently, so we have a contractor who has accepted the bid, or has bid and low bidder, local contractor, who, if the bond fails, they're going to do exactly that, they're going to go down Main Street, we're going to work with the downtown property owners and replace that Main Street water line, because that is the most important component of this project right now. The risk that we have is that we would put all our chips in this bond, and we would do all the other side project, all the other side water lines, and then the bond fail, and we still don't get big water downtown. And so, if the bond passes, we will do the side streets, so we'll do D Street, we'll do some on Third, and some other stuff, and get all of the outside components done with ARPA dollars and spend all those ARPA dollars, and then that last remaining stick of pipe, big pipe that will replace on Main Street will be done with this project.
So, I guess you follow up, that's, totally different question, the LID, do the property owners have to do it, or they would elect to do it?
They would elect to that, to do that, and so, the whole point, the whole issue was, I wanted to make sure that we could have a complete project, so what was put in that LID outside of the sidewalk vaults were the additional cost on those pavers, because they had all those different pavers on the Third Street, Pedestrian Plaza, the Festival Street on New Sixth, there were some additional landscaping and pedestrian lighting stuff, and so, all those things would make the project look good, but the project would still be successful without them, and so, if the downtown property owners wanted those, they could form an LID, and an LID comes before, they could petition for an LID, or find other funding for it, and then bring it to the council, and the council could vote and accept that LID, and then they would basically tax themselves for that.
Because basically, that would improve their property values.
Yeah, I mean, well, part of what we looked at is the breakdown, it gets really difficult, because an LID typically, I've done LIDs for like, road improvements, or sewer, or something, so everybody within that LID gets benefit of that improvement. Well, if you've got plazas and squares, somebody could argue outside, you know, of that area, saying, I don't get benefit from that plaza, because I'm one and a half blocks from it, and I'm a, an insurance salesman, I don't have walk-in customers, I don't get any, you know, so, when we start spreading this LID out, it gets a little, little different, and so, I didn't want to, I wanted to give, give the council and the public to say, hey, if they want those things, they can contribute to it, and then we can, at a later date, they can sort out the funding to it. If it's that important, there's grants, there's other opportunities out there that aren't attached to a bond. The whole intent of the bond is to address the deficiencies within the infrastructure.
In that light, so they can do that, downtown people can do that at any point in time before we get to that part of the project?
Yeah, and that's the other part, is, you know, we're picking, as I said, bond rates are going to go up and down. Who knows, tomorrow, concrete could go through the roof, and so, all these different components, we're asking the citizens to vote for a dollar amount. Once that dollar amount is locked in and we've got a rate, then we can back calculate and say, okay, concrete's actually gone down, so we can get more construction with this, or, you know, we, you know, because it is a year and a half, two years, before we can actually construct it, so that gives us a long runway to find grants, or outside funding opportunities, or shared, you know, developer, you know, might be somebody down here, you know, Mark Alexander, I'm not going to, shouldn't throw his name out, but people who want to invest in their property, and they say, hey, while you got it torn out, I'm willing to contribute X, Y, and Z, and do this and that. So, there's a lot of, a lot of details to work out, but today, we're talking about setting a dollar amount, and then, and then that lets us kind of work this project forward. I've told you, it's thirty-three million dollars in today's numbers.
Well, I guess one of my big things in this thing is, I feel that, you know, putting the sales pitch that there won't be any property tax increase due to this, I think that's misleading, because we're using all of our building money and our property repair money, the one point six million dollars we've been putting in there. So, we start using that, and we have a bond that's going to cost us one and a half million or one point eight. Within a year, within two years, we're going to have to be asking the public for an increase in our taxes, and a one million dollar increase is four and a half percent increase in our property levy. So, to me, to be upfront and just tell them, this is what it's going to cost us, you know, and to have that one point six million dollars is a seven percent property tax increase. And that's more forthright to the, to me, as a taxpayer, I want to know it, because it's got to cost us. The money's coming from something, so something's not going to get done if we take away from the money we got, we're using right now.
So, Councilor, let me ask you, the number you threw out at the beginning of that comment was how much?
Which one?
Just now, you're talking about taking one point six?
One, one point five, one point six, the number you had up there for the bond.
Okay, and that'll come out of Transportation, where it's currently at.
It'll come out of what we put in, and last year, we put it into Assigned Building Fund.
Oh, no, it's a separate dollar amount, we put money into the Transportation, we chose, the council chose not to put money into Assigned Building Fund, you could have done that.
It's same, years before, we had it in the Assigned Building Fund.
But we could do that again this year, put them in.
But we would have to add more to our property taxes to build that back up. I mean, the money's coming from somewhere, and we don't have that laying around, right?
We've got capacity in our transportation budget to service this bond, and if council makes a different decision, when they set the budget this year to not put money into the Transportation Fund capital, you can do that, and you could put that somewhere else, for example, the Assigned Building Fund. So, those are always choices that you get to make. How much you put into each of those is true, but I don't know that, I don't know that it's accurate to state that we wouldn't still have money to put into both of those into the future. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that's the way it would happen.
The math don't work for me.
So, then let me ask you, because I'm going to get in the middle of this a little bit here, so, if that's true then, so what happens in five years, ten years down the road, when we have a break on Main Street, and we have to fix a water line or a wastewater line? How are we going to pay for that?
I'm not saying don't do the project, I'm just saying be outright and say, this is what our property tax increase is going to be to pay for this project. Because everybody I talked to, they're like, well, it's no big deal, it's not going to cost anything, and that's wrong. The money's coming from something that we have used before something else.
Well, I'll let it sit for a minute, see if anybody else has a comment or question.
Can we go back to the questions? Thank you. I am personally in favor of going out for the GO bond, I support that, and what amount is, to me, between twenty years and thirty years, I'd just rather go with the twenty years on the bond, and what amount, amount that we need to go for? The thirty-three million, is that it?
Well, if you do, if you do include all of the LID, local improvements, okay, so that, if twenty-year would be twenty, between twenty-four and twenty-five million dollars.
Okay, that's the amount that I would want to go with. I want the vaults covered, but not the LID.
One, one consideration was that the, the vaults were nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there's, and I believe this number, because there's, when you create the bond, there's fees to build, you know, there's a percentage of that, so I believe that's baked into this twenty-four million. Concept that we had was, round this up to twenty-five, and then you basically have half the vaults there, so if it's splitting it between, between the property owner and the city, depending on where this all came out, that was kind of the concept. And again, these, we're trying to define a number that allows us to do the project and do it once, and so, we don't want to shortchange to where it's like, let's trim another five, let's trim another five, it gets to the point where you're handcuffing yourself, but it goes before the voter, so you don't want to add so much to it to say, well, we're just going to make sure, because this is, this is a, this is the cap, up to twenty-five, or up to twenty-four, five. Once everything's defined and bid and refined, it, it won't go above twenty-five, because that's what the voter said, it could go below that, which is what happened on the, on the SRF projects with the wastewater and water plant.
So, on the, on the, making the payments on the bond, I saw the one X, one X amount on here, so that's the, just the one time.
Pay down, front, yep.
And then, what is the percentage, is, are you taking a percentage out of all of these accounts every year to make these payments?
So, that's for the purpose, I'll try and stay consistent, so this is the twenty-four point five bond, and so, on this one that was in your packet, you could see, based off of the breakdown, because we, we grabbed the percentages, and so, you can see on that spreadsheet, nine, wastewater was nine percent of the project, water was twelve percent of the project, and so, we extrapolated those enterprise funds into their payment, and I'm saying, these percentages will probably change a little bit here or there, but basically, they're, in a twenty-year bond, annually wastewater would pay a hundred and fifty-seven thousand a year, and that's why I say, diversifying where these revenues are coming from allows you to not, you know, a twenty-six million dollar project's very significant for one entity, but you spread that across, and so, that, the way it's shown in front of you today, your actual transportation payment would be one point two million dollars for this example here, because it's seventy-one percent of the bond. Again, like I said early, earlier, that, you know, the goal was to not overextend any one of these, and so, if we were looking, you know, however the council or future councils decide to budget, whether it's facilities or transportation, currently in this budget, we're budgeting roughly two point three million dollars in transportation, who's to say, next, next budget, we move some of that back into facilities, but you're still looking, one point two is well below that two point three, so we're still staying within that to allow us to still invest in facilities, still invest in other transportation projects.
Director, if you would, I'm going to ask if our Finance Director, City Treasurer, Amy Gordon, can just jump in, I'm going to phone a friend here, because I don't have the numbers in my head, but maybe she can help us a little bit, what we did last year, or what we typically do in our budget year.
Yeah, Amy Gordon, City Treasurer, I think I can provide a little context to Councilor Spicklemeyer's concerns. If you look at this particular worksheet that's up, the portion of the annual bond debt that would come from property taxes is a one point two, almost one point three million. So, about five years ago, the city had a debt related to the Police Retirement Fund, it was a certificate of participation, the annual, I don't know, loan payment on that, I think was approximately a million dollars, you remember, Counselor?
More than that.
Just a little bit, a little bit more than that, one point two, one point four, maybe? When that bond paid off, council took seven hundred thousand of that amount that was dedicated towards servicing that bond, and they put it into capital transportation, specifically for construction of arterial streets. So, that seven hundred thousand is an annual allocation to capital transportation, and then, two years ago, council decided to stop funding the Assigned Building Fund and to dedicate those dollars to capital transportation. So, there's two point three million currently in the current year budget and the prior year budget, that's being dedicated towards capital transportation. So, I mean, council has some options there, because if you need one point three to service the bond, you know, you could potentially pull some of that back out and dedicate it towards, back to the general fund, as Mayor Johnson had indicated. Council still has options with that money that was, you know, dedicated towards capital transportation, because the amount of the bond payment's going to be less than that two point three million.
Well, and then the two point three million dollars, we get that this year by reducing and cutting all the departments' spending quite a bit, right?
I didn't hear that first part.
The two point three million that we put into that transportation fund this year, we cut it, because it was normally one point six, and they increased it, so to meet that, and with the other increases, we had to cut a whole bunch of the departments'. we had to cut a whole bunch of the department's spending. So we balanced the budget, correct?
There were no reductions from department budgets to get to that 2.3. There was the 1.6 million that had previously been allocated to the assigned building fund, but that was a direct transfer from being allocated to the assigned building fund to being allocated to capital transportation. So when it was allocated to the assigned building fund, city code defines that assigned building fund, so it can only be used towards capital improvements of city facilities. So it was restricted in a sense, assigned to that specific If we're just looking at where those dollars went out of the budget and went into, it came specifically from that assigned building fund that had assignments to it.
Thank you, Amy. So, quick question. Um, other, other projects, so it, put this up for a bond, the voters say yes, let's, let's do this. What, what are we risking? What are we pushing out as far as other things that, that are urgent as well, if, if anything? Is there, is there risk on that side at all? Any concerns?
I mean, I, I will editorialize and say, yeah, every, every, uh, every line item you see up there, you know, we, we've, you know, we've sunk capital, you know, every year we, we invest, we budget for capital improvements. Uh, water is the one that I'm most concerned about. You know, we've got a transmission line that connects our reservoirs to the water main, or to the water plant. That's, I, last I saw, I think it was a 16, 20 million dollar project. Uh, that would be a catastrophic failure. We, you know, I showed you the numbers. We don't have the money for that. This is not a huge amount, this is not, you know, handcuffing water, but that's a project we need to address. Uh, recoding, we have two reservoirs that need recoding. Um, those are at least a million dollars a pot. I mean, there's multiple areas and that's where we do our capital facility, or our, um, CIPs. We talked about transportation last week. And so Brighton is one of, of concern, Thane is another one of concern. Um, all of these projects are, you know, out there. I think what we have discussed, at least with this council and maybe a little bit from previous councils, is, um, committing to a, committing to a direction. Um, you know, Main Street has been identified as number one throughout the CIP. It, you know, a lot of these water mains, going back to when we originally set the study for the ARPA dollars, before the ARPA was, before ARPA was a thing, you know, we identified Main Street water as a, is a major concern. And so, yes, you know, could something happen when we're doing Main Street? Yes. And that's why we're trying not to over commit to do, you know, what, what we can afford. Um, I, I guess I'm going around and around to saying, yes, there's plenty of concerns out there, but at some point, the city has to commit and fix something because the list out there is very long.
So the, the way I'm looking at the question on, you know, is it the 20-year term or the 30-year term? 20-year costs us less money, but 30-year maybe lowers some of that risk as far as if something comes up or how much money can you set aside for other things? So I don't know if that's the right way to think about this, 20 and 30-year.
That is a good point. Um, yeah, because I'm always, um, very conservative, you know, financially and wanting to just get, get, you know, get the 20-year and get out of it, um, to free you up for, you know, because as I've said, this is a generational project. So the sooner we can close this out, we can start, you know, dealing with some of these other bigger projects that I've talked about. But maybe, maybe 30 is the answer. I'm not sure.
Director, can we phone a friend again, maybe, and ask Stephanie if you can hear us?
I don't think Stephanie's on. We have Kristi. Oh, she is. Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Stephanie's here, yep.
So my question is this then, um, if we were to, uh, fund a project like this for 30 years, obviously the payment is lower, but is there a penalty for paying it off early? Do we pay in higher interest rate? Is it possible 10 years down the road when interest rates drop down to 1% again, like they did, uh, did a couple of years ago, we could refinance? Could you just maybe address some of that briefly?
The only thing, usually depending on who you sell, uh, the bonds to, there is sometimes a period in which you can't redeem them or pay them off earlier. Um, if you go out, say to a 30-year, um, competitive sale, that is usually 10 years, but again, it depends on who it is. If you end up going to like USDA or DQ or anybody like that, they don't have one. But at some point, yes, you'll be able to pay the bonds off early and you can always, um, re, like I said, once you've got that redemption period gone, you can refinance those if the interest rates drop.
And paid off early without a penalty?
Once you've hit that, that period of time, and part of that is working with your financial advisor. So you could actually have, um, have them be redeemed at any time at all. Usually pay a slightly higher interest rate. That's a whole calculation that you've hired them to do and I don't have to. Um, but yes, once, once you've decided what that redemption date is going to be, or if it could be redeemed at any time, uh, then you just pay the principal and interest up to that date of redemption or paying it off.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I guess I, I look here and I can see that we have two from Clearwater Financial. So if somebody, um, from Clearwater Financial would like to add comment to that, we'd sure welcome it.
Sure. And Cameron, feel free to, um, to, um, jump in as well. But yes, what Stephanie was saying is there's something called, uh, something called a call date, and you put that in your bond documents when the bonds are being sold so that the folks that are investing in that understand how long those bonds will be held for, so that they can calculate how much they will make off those bonds. So the call date, I, I think the shortest typically, although I suppose you could say that there isn't one, but, um, is at five years. So, um, if you, in your bond documents, your offering statement, when you put it out to market, it will determine, it will say to the bond buyer what the call date is, meaning can you pay it off early and at which time? So we can run the numbers, Cameron and I, the folks at Clearwater, we'd be happy to run the numbers. Um, but to Stephanie's point, typically, the bond buyers would, um, for some uncertainty, your rate will be high if they're not sure that you would live out the bonds the entire time. So it might cost the city a little bit more money, if you will, if you determined you wanted a shorter call date so you could pay them off. Cameron, anything to add?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, I would just add that, um, a 10-year call, uh, is, uh, typical. And so generally speaking, that's going to get you the most, uh, the optimal, uh, combination of prepayment ability and flexibility, but also the, the lowest, uh, in, interest rate impact. So, uh, to, to both Stephanie and Kristy's points, if, if you were to reduce that, say to a seven or a five-year, um, uh, prepayment option, uh, that would cost you. Uh, we could do the research and, and look that up, but, um, generally speaking, 10 years is the optimal.
Thank you.
So if I don't understand that, that doesn't matter whether you do a 20-year or a 30-year. The 10-year is going to be, if you pay off, the most valuable would be at the 10-year. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Yeah. So regardless of, uh, the, the length of the term, um, your ability to prepay typically would be 10 years.
And did we talk about able to refinance in the life of that bond?
Correct. Yep.
You can refinance? I don't recall here.
Yeah. Yes. So that's part of the call date. That's part of your 10-year.
I see. It goes both if we wanted to pay it off early at 10-year or refinance at 10-year. That's your window.
Yep, exactly. And, uh, obviously after that 10-year period, um, that's when you're, you're really open to do a, a whole number of things. If you wanted to pay off bonds early, you can do that. If you wanted to, uh, refinance, you can do that. Um, it's just, um, investors like to have, uh, that window of time to, uh, know that that investment's coming back to them.
And I would just add, you could even do a combination to where you pay part of them off and then you refinance part of them as well, once you've hit that, in this instance, 10-year call date.
Mayor, um, all right, sorry, we don't have to go through you. Uh, so you're still out more money though, if you do the 10-year, and you do the 30-year, still going to be paying more money within that 10-year versus if you did a 20-year, you're going to pay less monthly. So you, you still save money by doing a 20-year. There's no way to shorten that or less, get a better deal with that?
Yeah. So to, to make sure we're, we're not make, uh, mixing concepts. So right now, we're just considering a 20-year term, meaning the, and a 30-year term. So that the bonds are out for either 20 years or 30 years. So that's the term element, uh, or the maturity element of the bonds. Um, this other element is the prepayment, and I apologize for the jargon here, but the prepayment or call provision, uh, is another concept that deals with our, uh, the city's ability to, to pay back those bonds, uh, early or refinance them. So two different concepts. You've got a 20-year and a 30-year term that, again, to Dustin's point, uh, the, the council is, is looking to make a determination on, and, uh, a prepayment, uh, provision that, uh, either way is, is, is likely to be 10 years on either a 20-year or a 30-year term. Um, does that, does that help clarify that?
I think that's good, Cameron. I just, um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, that was said here in this meeting, uh, so we just kind of know what all of our options are. You know, if we went to a longer bond and we could do the, uh, call provision, you know, and yes, there's always some money involved, but also if you decide you can pay it off in, say, 22, 23 years or something, a refinance, if rates ever took a dive like they did a few years ago, um, you know, those are always options. Who knows what's going to happen in the future, but it does happen.
Yeah. And to that point, Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, that is really what you hire us to do is to, to set that up in the optimal way that will, um, impact, uh, your taxpayers' uh, uh, the least, and then also to monitor that ongoing. So, you know, when those opportunities present themselves, uh, you know, we'll be right there to, to let you know that, that the market is such that this makes sense to, to refinance and that, that call provision is met so that we could explore those when they come up.
And I would just add, Cameron, if the council's not sure what term they want, it's a not to exceed term. So just like, um, it mentioned before that it's a not to exceed amount, the council could do the not to exceed 30 years, but if the time comes when they're ready to sell the bond and they get approval and they decide they want to do 20 or 25, they could do that. If you do not to exceed 20, you can't go longer than 20. Um, even with the refinance, you're still stuck with that initial term. But if you do want to go with a not to exceed 25 or 30, then you'll have the chance, when you get ready to sell, to decide exactly what term you want to sell for, 30 years or less.
Right. Might, might I also add, I think the original question might have been getting at, um, if you have a 30-year bond, will your, will, will your interest costs be more than a 20-year bond? And so if, uh, if that's the question, I, yes. So when we ran the numbers for a 30-year bond, um, principal and interest costs over 30 years are approximately 42 million dollars. The 20-year bond principal and interest is approximately 36 million.
The interest alone, how much would that be?
Uh, let's see. For, um, which one, 20 or 30? I'm sorry, say that again?
For the 20-year reduced, the interest amount?
Um, is 11 million dollars.
We, we save, we save about 6 million dollars if we go with the, the shorter, uh, interest or years, amount of years.
Mm-hmm, approximately.
Well, we can make that decision at a 10-year mark.
Do I have to speak up so they can hear you, Counselor?
Yeah, I was saying, we could, we could make that decision at a, a 10-year mark or a 15-year mark or, uh, yeah.
You would actually, uh, make the decision when you, uh, sell the bonds. So to, to Stephanie's point, that you could, uh, the ballot language could be a not to exceed. So you could say 30 years. Um, but then when we, let's say it's approved, what have you, and the, the city elects to do a 20-year bond, because you're not, you're not going up in term, you're going down in term. Um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Stephanie, but.
Right.
Then, um, at that point, uh, when we went to sell the bonds, uh, that's when we would, uh, fix the, the term and you would get a fixed, uh, rate of interest as well. It's not variable. So that's when you would determine that.
You would still be able to have the call date. So if you did determine that you're going to sell the bonds for 20 years. So that, it's important because the bond, the folks that want to buy your bonds need to know what the term is, um, and how much they're going to get in return for buying bonds. And so we have to be very clear upfront in a, in a legal document, spell all those out. Uh, but you would still have your call date. So if you had a 20-year bond, you can still at 10 years decide to pay it, pay it down, pay it off, pay it down, refinance it. Um, and that would all be spelled out in the document. So I think just to clarify, the bond ordinance, which will be on the ballot, um, would, would be asking the voters, um, and indicating that we would seek no more than 30 years. But after Cameron and, and I and at Clearwater, after we worked with you and, and it was passed, we would then crunch all the numbers one more time and we would work with you to determine the best going forward for, for your situation, rates, um, interest rates, excuse me, interest rates, interest rates, interest cost, et cetera. And then at that point, before you sold the bonds, you would need to make that decision.
The way, the way I see, I kind of what Counselor Spickelmeier is saying, I see this as the, this project itself isn't going to cost the taxpayers more, but if something came down the road, I don't know, some pipe breaks, something that now we need to put more money in, then yeah, we are going to have to maybe raise taxes to pay for that. But that's a separate thing that we're paying for. This project alone didn't cost extra. That would be a whole nother, a whole nother fund or a whole nother project that we would be putting money into, is how I'm seeing it. So we're still telling the taxpayers that this project is not going to cost you more property taxes. It's just, we're, you're already paying it and we're going to use the money you're already paying to bond this project. But if something down the, later down the road, some project comes more important or we have to do something, then at that time, we would address whether we have to get more money to be able to accomplish that. But that's a separate payment or a separate extra to that particular project or thing that we'd have to fund, is how, is how I'm seeing this.
Let's, let's talk a little bit about the ballot language and disclosure, because I think that gets into a little bit of it. Because you're going to have, um, you're going to have a little bit different things you could do depending on which project's going to cost you more. Uh, so for example, if your, if your sewer runs more, you could choose to raise sewer rates. Now what, of course, what you can do is choose to raise water rates to pay for the sewer piece, but you could either choose to raise sewer rates or you could choose to levy a portion of tax. And so what we do need to say, and, and what we have said in the, um, ballot language, is that, and I'll quote here, "The city intends to use existing savings and water and sewer revenues to minimize or eliminate the need for a tax levy. However, if the tax levy is needed to be fully utilized to pay the bond, the following disclosure will apply." And then by law, we have to say, "The estimated average annual cost to the taxpayer on the proposed bond levy," in this example was, you know, "It's a tax of $111.44 per 100,000 of taxable assessed value per year based on current conditions." So that sentence I just read has to be in there. We can explain a little bit, like I talked about, that the city does not intend to levy that. Um, but that's as far as you could go. We, we cannot say, for instance, the city, uh, won't levy that or can't levy that. We can just say you intend not to levy that. But if you did have to levy it, here's the full amount of the levy if you had to use nothing but tax levy to pay for these bonds. So obviously, education to your voters for this is gonna be huge.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Councilor Spiegelmeier on transparency. I think that we need to make sure that the voters know when they're going in to vote for this, that, you know, there may be other, uh, funds that come up that tighten the, tighten the budget and here's your disclaimer, um, because by no means do we want to give them a false hope that we would never pull from them or tax them extra or, um, and you never know what other council comes in and has different decisions. So, uh, we, you know, we can't make guarantees of those those types of scenarios. I think when going and talking about this bond, as long as we make sure that we are transparent to the, to the voters and they know all of the ins and outs, then they have the full knowledge and ability to make the best choice for them, themselves as a taxpayer. Because then at that point, they are making the decision.
I think along with that too, I think if you did it where it required the LID, it would tell the taxpayers that we're just doing the minimum and if we want it nicer, the building owners can do their part.
More open and transparent, the better. We're gonna do, I mean, I'm, I'm totally on board with this project. I just wanna make sure that we're very open and transparent about everything, how it works out. I don't, I don't know what the best way to label that. So basically, as she said, it will be labeled on the ballot, like you, you just mentioned before, right?
Yes.
They have to be labeled like that.
Yes.
Okay. Cause that was gonna be my question, is how are we, are we not confusing a person when they go to vote? Are we not confusing them? Cause I think we have had issues in the past with bonds or certain raises, um, to the taxpayers because they maybe don't fully feel like they got the full understanding of what it meant, um, and chose to say no on it. Um, like an auditorium tax, we had talked about possibly doing something like that, but a lot of people thought that was a tax increase, but really that was just a tax to those that came into the, into our, you know, to spend tax dollars here. Um, so you have to really make sure that we're letting the taxpayers know that this is exactly how this is gonna work. So I think it's really just gonna be all, again, all about educating and giving them all the facts. So that they, when they go to, uh, to that ballot, they know what they're voting for. And that, just based on what she said, if I read that ballot, I'd still be confused. So I think there needs to be more education done, uh, cause it's not gonna give you the full picture.
Right.
I would add, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just a, a quick thought on the credit quality of this. So typically when, um, you know, utilities like water, wastewater, uh, you know, um, stormwater and, and roads to a certain extent are issued, those can be, those are done with enterprise funds. So it's, uh, they're a revenue bond. Uh, generally speaking, revenue bonds, um, do not carry the, the credit quality that a, a general obligation bond does, you know, from a, a property tax backed perspective. And so uh, from a taxpayer, uh, impact, um, if, if the city's intent is to pay for these with, we'll call it existing revenues or, you know, um, identified revenues, um, and not levy an additional tax, but because it's a geo bond, get the credit quality of a geo bond, that's actually ideal from a, a credit perspective, uh, or from a, a taxpayer perspective. I'm, I'm getting the improvements, uh, at a, um, a better interest rate because of the, the backing of, of the, of the property tax.
As far as a twenty year goes, I'm, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on the fence. I don't know, twenty years is gonna obviously cost less money, no matter which way you slice it, um, but thirty years, uh, I, as you said, is kinda gives us a little bit of a window at least to, you know, if we need to cut back, we could always pay more into it. Not till a ten year, you can't pay more though, huh? That's right.
But we can save it.
But we can save it, that's true. So, or if we got tight, then we could spend that elsewhere, so. I, my guts telling, telling me to be a little more reserved and the thirty year gives us the window so that we look less likely to come back to the taxpayer, and I think that's the best option, is not to go back to them and say, oh, never mind, we have to find money somewhere else. Um, so thirty years seems like the better solution, but y- you know, it will cost a little more money in the long run.
So the difference is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars?
It was eleven million.
Yeah.
Six million difference.
Yeah. Thirty year, you had it on the other page with LID, you're covered up with one of the figures, but it's one million, two hundred and eighty-four, talking about the transportation side.
Oh, just that one.
Thirty years, one million or nine-nine-nine, so the difference on the property taxes is thirty to twenty is two hundred and eighty-five thousand, right?
For your annual debt service, yes, ish. So your debt service is your annual payment.
I was just looking at the ballot language, and it took me a couple of times to read this, and I understand where Counselor Spiegelmeier's coming from was, uh, down on page three, "City intends to use existing savings and revenue to minimize or eliminate the need for a tax levy." And then it says, "If the tax levy is fully utilized, the following disclosure will apply," and then it gives you those numbers. And like I said, it took me a couple of times to read that. I understand now, after the explanation, why that's included in here, but it, it could be confusing for some people.
Yep, yeah, I, I saw it last week.
Reading this language.
Yeah.
I mean, how creative can we get? Is this what?
That's what we saw on the phone right here.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can add more explanation to the paragraph, I think, depending on what it is you wanna say. Um, but like I said, ultimately, the end has to be, you know, if we need to fully use this tax levy, here's what the amount will be. Um, but, but we can definitely try to clarify the explanation, provided it does not, like I said, it doesn't actually legally appear to limit you from using the tax levy.
So, I, I mean, can we say, "If the tax levy is required to fund this bond, the following disclosure will apply and..."
Yeah, yes.
That would make more sense to me than fully utilized.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was my fault.
No, it's, it's okay.
I mean, I definitely think on, aside from just even the ballot, but having, I re- I really like the idea of having an open house uh, for those to come in with the topic of the bond, that we can answer questions for them. They feel kinda open about it, you know, it's not, doesn't feel, uh, like they have all these rules they have to follow, but they're, they're ju- they're there just to ask us questions and their concerns and their thoughts and for us to answer them. Um, I feel like we'll bring a better understanding when they go, go to go vote.
Yeah, our, our intent is to reach out to the public and let them understand the project and, and the ballot language. So, you know, the, it's, it's difficult for me because everything that we're doing right now is to meet the deadlines and get this on the ballot and work through the legalities and the finance component and the engineering to get it all boiled down into one, you know, something that you're gonna vote on. The next, however many weeks it is between now, May twentieth, is when, you know, public will be engaging the public. We'll have websites and things for them to see and understand the language. So our, that's, that's our intent.
How many, I don't know if you, what do you call them, open houses, basically, do we intend to have prior to getting to?
Prelimarily, I mean, we've had a couple already as, as we were working through it. Um, and I, you know, any speaking, I will go and talk to anybody who wants us to come, but we had intended initially two downtown and then one somewhere up in the orchards, go to people up there, because I think the feedback that we have gotten, at least from, you know, so far, uh, the interested parties are that this is, this is a project that impacts not just Main Street because of the sewer and the water components that make sure that the people understand the value of this project to the community as a whole. And so, yeah, it, it does impact the orchards.
Well, I think even with an open house, a big, big thing would be to make sure that our local media, you know, has a good description of, you know, how this thing is, lays out, you know, so it's really the public can read it, cause everyone's gonna read it there. You know, whether or not we have an open house or not, they're gonna read it on, in the Tribune or on Big Country News or wherever. That's where they're gonna take their data from.
But we need to answer those three questions now for you, correct?
Uh, yeah, if you wanna have it in front of you on Monday.
That's what I thought.
Next week.
That's what I thought.
So, uh, for that then, the, the line, "The total proposed principal amount to be repaid over the thirty year life of the bonds." This portion, did I understand correctly that this can be reworded a little bit to allow it to say, like, something like no longer than thirty years, so that we don't limit ourselves necessarily to twenty, but then as we get more to finalize paperwork, um, the mayor and us can make a finalized decision of, okay, this is the term we wanna go with.
Correct. Just to clarify, if, if we do thirty years, then of course, the numbers and the interest amounts need to reflect thirty years. So that would all say thirty years, but at the time you're ready to sell the bond, at that point, you could then decide what the term is going to be, which will, of course, affect what the, uh, total interest rate amount would be for you to pay it all off over time.
Okay, so the way I, yeah, so the way I understand that, it, if we said, if we said twenty on here, if we lock ourselves to that, thirty's no longer an option, but you would see lower rates right here, this, this one hundred and eleven forty-four cents per hundred thousand would be a little different, it'd be a little lower.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Can we go back to the main questions that you need from us?
It was, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear if that was to me, but basically what we need to know is the not to exceed total amount that you want authority to borrow, the not to exceed a term, twenty or twenty-five, thirty years, um. I think that's it, Cameron, isn't that it?
Yeah. Yep, yep, and then, uh, yeah, the other portions we've already talked about, Stephanie. So, yeah, that's the, that's the main ingredients. And I think probably for practical purposes, maybe more internal to the city, is just, um, making sure that there's a, a good understanding of the internal, um, buckets of funds that you're, you're looking to, to pledge to, uh, pay down the bonds or, or, you know, as an equity contributions, if you will, uh, to it. I wanna make sure that, um, everybody's on the same page with, with that. It's not necessarily necessary for the, the bond ordinance, but, uh, it's under, underlying.
Really, I think the biggest issue Cameron is referring to is just that if you're going to use enterprise funds to make part of the bond payment, we just need to be able to make sure that we've matched the enterprise funds to the portion of the bond payment. Um, that is responsible for the piece of the project. So if the project is twenty-five percent water, when you go to make payments for your debt service, then you could use, you could pay twenty-five percent of the bond payment from the water funds. Same with sewer and et cetera, uh, transportation, same thing.
That'll help you as you budget going forward each year, just to make sure that you have at least that accounted for yeah, in your debt service payment out of each one of those funds.
Right, and I think it was back to Council, uh, Spiegelmeier's point, just about transparency and what have you. Having that understanding as a body now, uh, enables, you know, us to communicate that to the public and then also ongoing uh, to make sure that those, uh, you know, that those intentions, again, not, you know, covenanted or strictly, you know, adhere to from a, from a bond perspective, but that the public knows that's the intention of the city is to, that those funds are used for the project.
So, not to exceed twenty-five million for thirty years? Not to exceed thirty years? The term?
Counselor, I'm gonna ask you to speak up a little bit, cause I wanna make sure that our friends on Zoom and here also.
Yeah.
And the public.
So if we, if we wanted to go with the, uh, with, with LID and not do the over extravagance, um, we're looking at not to exceed twenty-five million for wording on our bond?
Mm-hmm.
And then?
Yes.
And then the thirty year?
I'm more comfortable with the thirty year, it just.
Gives us some wiggle room.
Time.
Like you said, we can pay it off, you know, we can pay more towards it in ten years.
More flexibility.
And then the LID too was, it's not a requirement, it was if they chose to.
If they chose to, yeah.
I'm fine with thirty years and the LID language to exceed, was it twenty-five percent?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm okay with that language.
Then on the, on the bond, do we wanna still say one hundred and eleven dot forty-four?
To leave ourselves open.
Stephanie will, I mean, with the terms, Stephanie will redraft all of this and we'll bring it back to you next week for, with the updated numbers on it. Right, I just, more what I meant was, Yeah, I'm sorry. if, if we, if we don't say one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-four cents and instead we say something more like eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, we do lock ourselves in to an extent, so to speak, in the thirty year. So I just wanted to make that clear, if that's the case.
You're not, you, you don't have any discretion. So once you've decided on the amount and the term, then that um, proposed tax levy is gonna be the amount that is needed if you were to levy the entire bond payment as a property tax.
Gotcha, okay, so we are
So.
making that decision on the, the term today too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you'll be telling the taxpayers, this is the most we may levy a tax, like I said, and I changed the, the language um, a little bit to say, just if, let me know if this sounds more clear. However, if the full tax levy is needed to pay for the debt payment of the bond, the following disclosure will apply. Is that better than utilize?
Yeah, that, that's clearer to me.
Okay, um, but then, like I said, we have no choice on the amount. The amount of the proposed bond levy is just like a, whatever amount would be required if you had to levy the entire amount to pay for the bond. And we have to say that, there's no discretion on that.
And in reality, you could choose to levy less than that amount.
Yes.
You could, but we have to tell them the, the max amount that it could be, even if the city only needed, you know, not twenty, twenty, uh, twenty-five million, maybe you only needed twelve. But upfront, they have to have for transparency, uh, reasons, they have to know what the full extent could be if you took out the whole twenty-five.
And you didn't use any other revenues to help pay for the debt service.
Right.
Counselor Spiegelmeier, if I could ask you then, does that address some of the concerns you have with transparency?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in terms of the budget, I can't tell you what's gonna happen next year, none of us can, but, um, I think based on our track record, we've done a pretty good job, I think, of, you know, managing what we have. And we'll have a new set of problems, new set of questions to consider this summer and fall. And so what that budget will look like, I don't know, but, um, I feel reasonably confident that we're in a pretty good position with how we've allocated in the past, that we should be able to continue down that path, so.
Okay, here's, talk a little louder. Uh, you don't have to repeat it, I heard it, but barely.
Well, and I apologize. Well, and I apologize. I feel like we're in a pretty good position and we set our budget up pretty good over the last three years that we can continue to make these payments and also contribute to design, building fund and do other things. I think, I think we're in a pretty good spot. We continue to see efficiencies. You know, just today, I was shown a new program for our utility buildings where customers can use this system from this thing here, including renters. And the accounts are not in their names, but they can do that. And if this system works like it's supposed to, kudo to our IT folks, ISS listening back here to you guys. Just today, I heard that if we get all this running and then we're headed down the right road, we may have need for one less position. And this is how we're just becoming more efficient as government. This is how we build up some of these capacities to do these things, but that happened to raise additional taxes. So that's what we strive for. That's pretty cool, I think. I guess one of my, just to add on, not to null and this, is that if we did pass the bond passed and we make a statement that we're not going to increase, they shouldn't increase the taxes. Then when we work through our budget and we have to increase it? They won't care what the increase was for. You told us it wasn't. You know, and it is what it is, but to me, that's one of the bigger fears. Well, and that's a fair statement because I had a chance to speak before a group recently and I was asked that question. So are you telling me you will never raise taxes? I said, I can't say that. That would not be honest for me to say that. I tell you, we don't intend to. And I explained a little bit about how we've set up things. But it's always a possibility and I think that's what Stephanie was trying to get to, you know, and Christine, where we have to tell them, if we had to take the levy in year five, for example, we ran out of monies, if you will, then this is what it would be, you know, per thousand. So we're giving them all the information we can, but upfront, I think it's fair to tell them that we're doing a good job for them. And if they don't know that, they should come around and talk to us and take a look at it themselves, you know. But I feel like we're well-positioned to do that. And that's what we were hired to do, you know, is to make these decisions for the city. And I feel like we're in a good position. And, you know, I have to give a lot of credit to our staff, everyone that works at the city. I think they do a wonderful job of keeping us on track, so.
It sounds like we might have consensus on, or like ready, ready for a vote, that the number we want to go with, as you were saying, is the, does not exceed 25 million and going to be in the, what's the next, the term for the 30-year. I think that answers the questions, but I don't know how to proceed.
Do you have a vote on that? Do they have a-
Somebody can make a motion. Counselor, if you'd like. You wanted 20 years.
I wanted 20.
Oh, I apologize.
But it doesn't mean that that was a motion. I didn't make a motion, I just said what I would prefer. So I will support what the council wants to do, but that was my preference. Less interest.
So if somebody would like to make a motion, they could just read right off the bullet points and something to the effect of, I move that the city proceed with a public vote for a bond for infrastructure improvements. There's the word infrastructure's behind that IT picture there to Main Street. And then you could say, in the amount of this, not to exceed X number of years. So that would be a proper motion.
Okay. I move that the city council-
Proceed.
The city shall proceed with a public vote for a bond for infrastructure improvements to Main Street. The amount shall not exceed 25 million for a 30-year term.
Not to exceed 30-year term?
Not to exceed 30-year term.
Before I repeat that, Stephanie and Christine, does that make sense? Not to exceed 25 years, not to exceed 30 million?
25 million.
It will transverse, but just to remember, the city council will have to adopt a bond ordinance with all the formal language. So you don't have to get too picky on this. We really, you wouldn't have to do a motion if you don't want to. We're really just looking for the 25 million, 30 years. But if you want to do a motion for that, that's fine. But this will not be final and authorized to go to ballot until you adopt the ordinance on March 10th, if you do.
Thank you, Stephanie. Counselors, we have a motion on the floor. IT, you're going to have to put that back up there.
That was me.
Sorry. Oh, you? Oh. Okay. So again, this is not final action. We'll have to have a bond ordinance. But Counselor Wright moved that the city proceed with a public vote for a bond for infrastructure improvements to Main Street, not to exceed 25 million, not to exceed 30-year term. And it's been seconded by Counselor Klein. Is there further discussion? Counselor Spicklemeyer? So for clarification, this just means that it's, that's what's going to come out for vote on Monday, next Monday. So Stephanie Bonney there is going to prepare a bond ordinance for us, correct, Stephanie?
That is correct, Mayor.
And up there, including Melissa, she's been so quiet, is going to review that. And that's what will come. And then Jennifer will take a look at it for us ahead of time and then get us, to us, and then you'll have an opportunity to vote on this on Monday night. Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Director. Counselors, next up, we have Roman number six, unfinished and new business, item A, City Councilor comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the City Council, an item that may become for the City Council to proceed in the future. They shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Thank you, everyone in TV land.
Thank you.
Counselors, any comments?
Just a brief one.
Counselor President Kleberg.
Oh, I'll wait till the next, your next topic.
Okay. Item B, City Boards and Commissions, Liaison Updates. Counselor President Kleberg.
Thank you. Last week, we had a special meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency Board, primarily to look at budget for this next year and just brief talk about any upcoming projects that may or may not trigger the need for a new revenue allocation area. Found it interesting that Commissioner Havens was in attendance and brought some documents that he had apparently found at the Brainerd Building. They're having a meeting right now at the Brainerd Building discussing the ERA, which I thought was curious since we were involved in a lawsuit over the legitimacy of the Urban Renewal Agency not too long ago. I was mayor at the time and I will keep you posted.
Thank you. Counselor President Kleberg, other boards or commission, Liaison Updates. I'm going to ask Tanya if you could just remind the council about the status reports for the councils, for the commissions and the boards that we're working on?
So we're sent to City Code, Section 2, I believe it's 48. We're supposed to do a periodic review of the advisory board and commissions. We have that planned for the April work session. So your boards and commissions should be meeting and discussing, I think they'll be, I've provided the wording, but just a periodic review. I think there's a few boards that are exempt to that. Not exempt, but it's Planning and Zoning, Audit Committee, Library, and I think Code Board of Appeals, but those are all state required. So those aren't. Those boards and commissions won't be bringing those, but all the other ones will be bringing a periodic review. So just a reminder for that.
Okay. So if you are liaison to any of those boards or commissions, please talk to them and help them out or encourage them or get them the resources they need so that we can get the most up-to-date information that we can. We would all appreciate that very much. And also, we have, as I mentioned at our last meeting, we have openings on several of these boards and commissions, including our Compensation Review Committee, which meets every two years prior to the elections. And they take a look at council and mayor compensation packages and they make a recommendation to those councils. So if you know of anyone in the public who would like to serve on that, we need some applications soon. I think we've received one. But if you have somebody who's really interested in government, they have some ideas on, you know, council and the mayor, then encourage them to submit an application or contact the clerk's office and Tanya can help get them lined out. But we are actively, and here soon aggressively, going to be looking for candidates because we need to get those meetings completed and then the recommendation turned into this body so that you can consider that in an upcoming meeting in June, I think. Has to come in by June 1st, so. Mayor comments? Well, I just want to congratulate Sergeant Arzon again today on his accomplishment and Chief Cusick, the entire staff over there, thank you for what you do for us and your passion in our community and keeping us safe. And I guess for the council, too, for your time and commitment to this, for doing people's business. So I appreciate that. I know it's a lot of work sometimes, but you take time out of your busy lives to be here. So thank you for that. Agenda topics, item B. Are we planning to not, or jump ahead to Roman number seven?
No. One, Mr. Mayor. Director Justin had written up this document on Fenton Gym Facility Funding Plan about a month ago. And I wonder if we could add this to, to an agenda, maybe to discuss a little further his thoughts here in the next month, month or two, when it's convenient.
Counselor Spicklemeyer? Yes, it might help. We're putting that on the Parks and Rec agenda for the next, this next month's meeting to discuss it, come up with a proposal to bring to the council.
Perfect. Well, then I take it back. Thank you.
That's good because I wasn't going to vote for it and I don't even get to vote. But it is, yeah, I attended, I think, two of the last Parks and Rec meetings, so we're trying to make progress on it. There we are, just taking some time. But good question, though.
Right.